All right. Welcome to the February 14, 2018, the Shob Regional School Committee meeting, regular meeting. Happy Valentine's Day, School Committee. It's lovely of you to spend your Valentine's Day with us. We really appreciate it. Calling the meeting to order at 6:00. Today, our tonight's meeting, we have, one of our members is participating remotely. That is Kathy Codyann. And according to the procedures, I need to let you know that she's participating remotely because she had a family illness. So, given that, any time we take a vote tonight, it will have to be by roll call, not just for our executive session. And I think that'll cover it. Are there any citizens' comments tonight? I see a citizen.
No.
No. Okay. Thank you. Joan DeAngelis is sitting in for Superintendent Clenchey. Joan, Ms. DeAngelis is the Director of Pubal Personnel Services. And that also covers Ben. So, thank you very much for being here. We really appreciate the guidance. I've got a couple of quick things under School Committee Chair Updates. So, Alina, thank you for coordinating this. It looks as though we will likely need a meeting. I do not know if we're going to need more than one, so I'm not prepared. I'm looking at you because you always say, "We need to have one every single week." And the members were polled as to whether February 21 or March 7 work. And we have five people who can do it for, can meet on the 21st and one that, six that can meet on the 7th. So, we do have to vote to add a meeting. Let me just give you some perspective. Personally, if there's any way for us to do it on the 21st, I would like to. And the reason is because we have our public hearing on the budget on the 28th. So, that will give us time to do a little bit more scrubbing. Plus, without the superintendent here, there are a couple of things we're not going to be able to really dig down into tonight. So, next week it would give us an extra, an extra week before the hearing. It is school vacation week, so if you are otherwise indisposed and you cannot make it, we certainly understand. That said, it really is the desire of the Board as to when you want to meet. So, given all of that, and I just want to remind everyone, our budget needs to be approved per our regional agreement by March 14. And we still have several things to get through. So, I would ask someone to make a motion to add a meeting. I would love for it to be the 21st. Hint. Hint. Anybody?
Are we starting early that night? Or is that, I know that was one of the questions about whether we could start.
We would, it looks like 5:30 is the earliest we could start, given constraints.
That's what I needed to know.
I'm looking at this, one individual has, in a constraint, can't start until 5:30. So, given that, I would love for someone to make a motion to add a regular school committee meeting on February 21, beginning at 5:30 PM.
I move that the school committee holds a meeting on February 21 at 5:30 PM.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Elise, second?
Second. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. We have to do.
We're going to do.
Say it out loud, right? I can't just raise my hand. Sorry. Seconds.
Second. Yes. Thank you. Any concerns? I know a couple of you can't. You won't be here.
I won't be here.
Neil would be here. And Susan won't be here. So, you have to be on time. So, that means that Steve and Mark and Kathy and Elise and I absolutely have to be here and we lose the quorum. So, just keep me posted if something crazy comes up, okay? Okay, we're going to do a roll call vote.
Can I make a suggestion?
Elise, wait. Oh.
What's the 28th? My suggestion would be that you make it for both and then you cancel the second, the March 7th.
I thought about, I thought about doing that.
If there's five and they can't make it, you don't have a quorum, you can't revote to have something put in for March 7th.
We could on the 28th.
28th, you could. I won't be there for that either.
I won't be here on the 28th either.
You won't be here on the 28th either. And Steve won't be here on the 14th. I got that one. Do you want to amend?
Sure. Is it the sense of the meeting that to put up both dates and then we can cancel one?
Unfortunately, yes.
Yeah.
So, I move, amending my, withdrawing my motion. I move that the school committee meet on February 21st. Is that right?
Yep.
And also March 7th, at a time to be specified in the meeting posting.
So, the 21st would still be the 5:30 start time.
Okay. 5:30 on the 21st and usual 6:00 on the 7th.
Yeah. All right. Now, do I need a second?
Second.
Thanks, Elise. Okay. Roll call vote. Alina, it's going to be Steve.
Yes.
And Mark.
Yes.
And Lorraine, yes. And Lynn.
Yes.
And Neil.
Yes.
And Elise.
Yes.
And Kathy.
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. Okay. Pardon?
Did we say that we're going to delete it because it didn't?
Yeah. If we don't need the 7th, we'll remove it. Okay. So, the other topic I want to share with you is, so we only have a couple more meetings, obviously, left. And I've received some topics from a couple of people on agenda items that you want to dig down deep into for the budget. I'm trying really hard to keep the next several meetings kind of clean and push off things that we don't have to do to keep that time for us to really dig into the budget. So, I'm going to put this out there again. If there, I know that the digital learning structure is one that we're going to be probably devoting a big chunk of time to at the next meeting. And what was the other one, Alina? That was a big, oh, personnel ads. I've asked the superintendent to prepare, and we need this for the next meeting, a list of priorities. Because we went into our workshop on that Saturday morning and we heard from all of the areas of the district and what the priorities and the needs were. But now, we need to understand from the administration's perspective what those priorities are and what is recommended to be funded through the budget. Because I need to see, I think we all need to see what is it that we're talking about with these big numbers and what came off. I don't necessarily have to know, I don't think we have to know what came off. We have to know what stayed in. Okay? So, we will ask her to do that for us. And then, I know that Pat Maroni is going to be bringing forward the, insurance was the other one that was a big question as to what are we doing with insurance and the renewal of that. So, that'll be coming as well. But if there's any other large topic, and I'm not asking for, you know, something that can be answered through email and then we can get it out to the full committee, but if it's a topic that needs to be deliberated on, please, please let me know soon because I don't want to wait till the 11th hour and not have the time that you need to have a discussion.
True.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. Isabel, Student Representative Report. Do you have anything good?
Yeah, I have actually a good amount of exciting stuff.
Good.
So, the first thing's from the Band Department. So, I talked about the middle school students trying out for the Central District Junior Honors Ensemble a few weeks ago. And we have 12 students, six from Hale and six from Luther Burbank Middle School that actually made the Central District Junior Honors Ensembles. So, they earned their spots for more than 800 Central Mass students who tried out. And these students will now get the chance to work with some of the best music educators in the country and perform a concert together in the spring. Lastly, from that department, Hale Middle School will be putting on their production of Peter Pan Jr. from March 3, 1st through March 3rd. From the Athletic Department, the Alpine Ski Team will be competing for the league championship tomorrow afternoon versus Lincoln Sunbury at Nishoba Valley. The Nordic Ski Team competed in the league sprints this week and are preparing for the state championship on February 27. The Boys and Girls Indoor Track Teams competed in the district meet last weekend and we have students competing in the state championship on Sunday. The Boys and Girls Swim Team competed at the Central West Championship over the weekend. The girls finished 25th overall and the boys team finished 10th overall. The boys have qualified for the state meet and so they will be swimming this weekend at BU. The Girls Hockey Team is 9-6 and hoping to clinch a postseason spot today. And the Boys Hockey Team is improving as the season goes on, hoping to come in second place in the league to make playoffs. And the Boys' last scheduled regular season game is this Friday at 8:10 PM. The Girls Basketball Team is 12-6 and qualified for postseason. The team celebrated Senior Night earlier this week. The Boys Basketball Team is 8-9 and still fighting for a playoff spot. There's a really big game tonight against Maynard, so they have to win tonight to make playoffs. And on the Boys Basketball Team, senior Justin Purse was able to score 1,000, his 1,000th point last Friday night against Shepherd Hill. And so, that makes him the second male in school history to score 1,000 points in the basketball team. The Wrestling Team is doing very well. They won the league title over the weekend and they also won the MIA Division II Central Mass sectional title. And they'll be competing in the state tournament this Friday and Saturday. Lastly, the Middle School Basketball Teams are excited for the Play Day, which is hosted at Nishoba on Friday for all three middle schools and they play against each other. And then, from Lancaster, the PTO and their middle school are working together to sponsor two cultural enrichment programs for the middle school students. The sixth graders are enjoying a presentation called Mythbusters, which is a program about ancient Greece. And the eighth graders will host a visit from the MFA Outreach Program. The Average Program introduces students to photography as social witness program through their traveling museum collection. They all examine images of early to mid 20th century America and learn how artists past and present use photography as a tool for documenting and seeking change on important social issues. Nishoba will be hosting its annual presentation regarding the academic program and course selection for eighth graders on Monday, March 5 in the auditorium. So, taking in all the eighth graders from around the district, explaining how the process is in the high school. They usually have volunteers as well to guide kids and parents around the school, answer questions, things like that. And Nishoba's getting ready for the first winter sports pep rally on Friday. So, after the success of the fall one, kids are really excited, so we'll be doing that last period on Friday.
Very good. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Isabel?
When will that pep rally be?
In the gym. In the gym.
Not outside this time.
No. Although.
I don't know. I went through the traffic on that.
It was fun.
No, it wasn't.
Well, the traffic wasn't, but the pep rally was really fun. Or what do we call that?
We call them the pep rallies.
Well, it was fun. Okay. Thank you. And thank you very much, Isabel. Appreciate that. We've got two items on, actually, we've got two items on our new business. And I know Principal Grady is here from Hale Middle School. And I wonder if I could ask a favor of you. Could we have our athletic director jump ahead of you? Actually, yours is really quick, so you know what? I'm going to, I'm going to, why don't you come on?
Let's do these things first, I think.
Yeah, but you know what? I appreciate that. Yours is so quick that I, it'll be quick. So, Principal Grady is our principal at the Hale Middle School and he's here to talk to us about the Hale, the Mabel Hale Fund proposal.
Right.
And we know that your letter is in the packet.
Right. So, my purpose in being here is to request your endorsement for continuing to pursue the Mabel Hale Fund, which was set up upon Mabel Hale's death in 1975, I'm sorry, 1966. And it was established in 1975. Right now, there's about $9,700 in the Mabel Hale Fund for us to access. The way that the proposal started is I gathered with two parent representatives, a PTO representative, a faculty member, and myself to discuss different ways that we might utilize this money for the benefit of all Hale students. And one thing that seems to be lacking is some late buses to allow students to stay after school, to participate in a variety of different after-school activities. It's common across the Commonwealth to have something like this and we don't. And we're finding that a lot of students are kind of using town buildings, whether it's the library or they're hanging out in our lobby, waiting for rides. And it just, I think there's a lot of value in having students engage in academic and non-academic activities after school. I think it helps them feel more connected to school and therefore, they perform better. So, the real purpose of this would be to apply the grant over the course of this year, next year, and hopefully, future years, if we're thoughtful with how we spend the money, to go towards transportation, to late buses specifically. It will probably offset some of the different material needs that the clubs would have in order to run, whether it's like, you know, frisbees for the ultimate, frisbee teams and some archery equipment for the archery club, those sorts of things. I did meet with Ms. Rubenstein, who gave me his endorsement to come before the school committee. So, here I am.
Well, it's certainly an honorable thing to do with that money. I wish we could do that for all the schools. I'm really impressed with the fact that you want to use it for transportation to keep the kids at the school. So, that's kind of cool. Does anybody have any questions? Because Lynn?
I'm under the impression that buses are really expensive. Is that enough to take care of the buses, the late bus?
So, I can't speak specifically to the contracts that we have with the bus company, but I do know that the way that we've worked it with D-Bus is that they would provide us with two buses, starting at 4:00. They have to finish their runs by around 5:00. And each bus is $50 a run. So, it's about $100. We would operate the after-school activities simply on Tuesdays and Thursdays. The other component is we have to staff it, so, you know, faculty need to be available. So, we've really tried to narrow it and say, you know, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, other days you're going to run your club. So, it sort of helps us to main is the overhead costs and them being there as well as the buses.
What's the issue?
Well, I know that we can't charge the buses. Is after-school different than regular?
Why would we do that?
Well, no, no. Why would we do that?
Not at school sanction, but yeah.
No, we can't charge.
Can't charge, right.
So, I was just wondering if school activities were different.
If there's school activities, then it's not.
So, it doesn't matter?
Yeah. We ran into that issue.
Okay. No, it just sounds like it's not. Oh, good. You had a question?
Yeah. So, it's twofold, maybe threefold. So, the first thing, how does this overlay with extended day?
Extended day doesn't happen in the middle school level at Hale.
Okay. All right.
They use our building.
Right.
But they don't, they don't arrive until 3:40 usually.
Okay.
And there wouldn't be much of a.
So, there's not.
For facility use, really none.
Okay.
And it doesn't have any impact because they're elementary school kids coming up from central.
Sure. Yep. And then, is this for the late buses, is this an ongoing annual thing? Or is this like, you've got the money now, so you'll do it now? And it has to be revisited next year and hopefully, there's funds available or something?
So, the way I'm looking at it right now is this is simply a pilot.
Sure.
We've got about 50 students whose parents have said that they would be interested. And if need be, they would also pay a sort of pay-to-play fee down the road, should that be necessary. But right now, I think if we're thoughtful with how we use the money and you look at there would be a total of 13 weeks where we would run a Tuesday, Thursday activity. And it's about $100 a week. That's $1,300, right? Simply for transportation. So, some material items, things like that. I think we can extend the $9,700 well into next year. After that, I think really at the end of this year, we need to look at how it went, what our numbers were, how many programs we had. You know, if there was three kids in a program, we might not even need to run that program next year.
Sure.
So, really, to answer your question, I think it's enough to get us through the remainder of this year and into next year. But going into next school year in the summer, I need to have another plan in place in order to have a contingency, should we not have funds available in 2021.
I like Neil. You bring up a really good point.
So, it's going to the precedent.
Yeah.
So, if we're doing this for the one school, what does that mean for the district as far as, and I hate to use that word parody, but what does that do for the district? Parents that may say, "Well, I live in Lancaster and I want my kid to be."
They don't have a Mabel Hale fund.
Do the same thing. I understand that. But if we're doing this, if we're, I just want to make sure that if we're doing this, we're not setting some sort of precedent that we now have to roll out to the whole district and that it becomes a legacy thing that we end up losing. I think it's a great thing and don't get me wrong, but I'm just on that.
If you're using a fund to run a pilot and it's very clear that, you know, this is.
That's, the expectation has to be that.
Right. This is the expectation. This is a limited pot of money. We're piloting this and seeing how it works and how, you know, and then making decisions going forward, then it's not setting an expectation that this is necessarily going to move out to every school, you know, in Lancaster and every, and Bolton.
Understood, but it's a valid rationale.
Are parents being told that you're piloting and that you're going to assume the cost of the bus, but it's a year-to-year thing? I think that, I think that that's the key, right?
I think that's the crux, but also, and I understand what Elise is saying and I tend to agree with that, but, but is there, once you set precedent, do we then, is there an argument, like a real argument, that parents can make in other schools saying, "We need to have the same thing"? I just don't, I don't know that. And I'm just throwing that out there because that could be a can of worms and.
I can respond with two things. So, one, I am aware that in Lancaster, at some time in the recent history, they were given over $10,000 to put it to their student activity fund. And I don't believe that that money was shared with the other three towns. So, I do know that it bolstered their student activity account to use for student activities. This is precisely what that would be. It would be a student activity for accessing nearly the same amount of money to use to run an activity program for kids. The second thing I would say is, parents have been informed, both in an official letter that was sent home in a mailer, as well as an email, that indicated the idea behind this program, that it is certainly a pilot program. And I think they know that also because we've made it clear that we're starting at halfway through the school year because we needed to get all these sort of things lined up. We surveyed families and families said that immediately, right now, every family that responded said they would be happy to, and I can share that information, they would be happy to pay. I gave them a range, $25 increments from $25 to $100. And 60% of them said they would pay up to $100 a child to participate in an after-school program. So, I think with that little nugget of information, I think it does enable us to think, well, down the road, should we need to incorporate this pay-to-play model? And we'd be able to do that. I, you know, I can't speak to how the other activity funds are used in the two towns.
Yeah, yeah. No. No. It's just the, more the legal precedent that somebody could come in and that was my own concern.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Kathy.
Okay. So, it's hardly.
You need to come closer to the phone.
Do I? What do you use?
We can't hardly hear you. Can you come closer to the phone?
It's practically, you know, like.
Can you talk louder?
Is the volume all the way up now? It's not real loud.
No, even worse now.
Yeah.
Should we find this up to him?
You'll find when you started.
Did you turn the volume down on your phone?
Can I ask a question? Can you do me?
No.
No. Can you turn the volume up in your phone?
It's up. It's on.
There you go.
There.
Is it good now?
Yeah. I think it's on her end. It is on her end.
About, it's close to $10,000 in Mabel Hale. Will that money be used in totality to this pilot? Or are you going to leave some money in the Mabel Hale account?
Well, let Kyle answer. It's his question.
So, the Mabel Hale Fund is available on an annual basis. The Mabel Hale Fund had not been accessed, in my knowledge, for the last five years. So, that money had accrued over time and we're asking for the full amount to be placed in our student activity fund. And like I said, use it thoughtfully down the road to keep the program running for a number of years.
Oh, no, no. I get that. I get that. But will, what, what will, if you use that money this year, what's left in the account? Or are you going to close the account?
I believe there's $35,000 left in the account.
Okay. That's a good amount. Okay. And then, we have been talking about monies that have been left in student activities account at each of the schools. And I believe there's going to be a meeting we have to discuss the disposition. Is that money that you might utilize with this initiative?
No.
No.
It's not in the student activity.
No, the same thing. Okay. So, can I, can I just call a timeout for a second? So, there's money that was allocated to this school in a grant by an individual that lives in that town. The money hadn't been accessed in five years. It's accrued. The principal's asking to have that money utilized. This isn't just to you, Kathy. This is to the room, too.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, no, no. The principal is, what'd you say? The principal is asking, "Could I please have the money that's been accrued that's sitting there and use it for something wonderful for the children?" And frankly, my answer is yes. Thank you. As long as the, and everyone gets a vote, but as long as the parents know that you may not be able to do this, because to Neil's point, we don't want to set a precedent where all of a sudden, we're paying for after-school buses. While that would be wonderful, we've got our own issues with regional transportation being reimbursed because it's been woefully under-reimbursed from the state for years since we got the, the original promise.
Yeah. I just wanted to know how much money was in the account. So, the answer is, there's a base of $35,000. Typically, you would take the interest from that every year and do something and then accrue for at least five years. And this is an amount that would be spent to pilot this program, which I think is a great idea.
Okay. Does anybody have, I lost Mark. Sorry. Mr. Jones.
You're thinking of expanding somewhere in the vicinity of $2,000, more or less, in the coming six, remainder of the year? Is that the vicinity of what you're thinking?
Yeah. I'm not certain exactly what we have for material costs, but the goal would be to spend.
Two to three, maybe.
Yeah.
Something like that. So, that you expect you'll be, have funds available to continue the pilot as an experiment?
Absolutely.
Money permitting. It looks like money is likely to be permitting at least one, one to two more years.
Absolutely.
This will cover the stipends and everything that you need to have done.
It will not cover all the stipends. We will certainly need to, now, to have the pay-to-play model. So, if there's students who are involved, we need to, I have 51 families that have responded that are interested, some on Tuesdays and Thursdays, some on Tuesdays. And we need to, my, my plan of action is to get the, get faculty interested in supervising, to get busing organized, to access the Mabel Hale fund. And then to find out exactly the number of students who have signed up and signed permission slips and, and have a, have a charge for them to offset the cost of a stipend for each faculty member.
Okay. Any other questions? Can we give this man the money that should belong to that school?
And this is separate from the regular activity stipend?
Yes.
Yes.
So I move that we endorse the request of the principal to apply for Mabel Hale funds in the amount of 97, 96, and 76 cents. And to transfer to the student activities fund of his school, which is the Hale School in Stowe. And I guess that's it.
Thank you. Wait a second.
Second.
Thanks, Steve. Okay, we're going to do a roll call vote unless someone has something else they want to share with us. I'm a yes. Elise?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Lynn? Mark?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And Neil?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much for coming in.
Hey, hey, good job.
Kathy. All right, we're moving on. We're going to ask Tanya Rich, our athletic director, to come forward. She has, so I'm moving this one item from old business, which, and Neil, I'm going to turn it over to you as the chair of the budget warrant subcommittee. And then we'll go back to our human resources update. As long as school committee, you're good with that? If I can move those items around? Thank you. All right, so we're going to take one piece of budget warrant subcommittee items in this section of the meeting and then we'll do the other two items after, when we move back into our regular agenda.
Okay, so we've gone back and forth extensively. And as you know, Tanya's been to school committee two, three times, something like that, with crazy amounts of information, crazy amounts of time that she's spent. And, and we came to some conclusions in BMW that we're passing forward as a recommendation to the school committee. That is the following. So the current user fee right now for each individual sport per season is $150 per student. There's no cap that exists. So if you could have nine children at home, they could all have three seasons of sports and they're paying the entire vote. And that's a lot. So taking a look at that, where fees are, and right now, we know that the average user fee amongst the mid-watch, I believe, of schools, which is what we're part of, is $210 per sport. So we haven't made any adjustments to this model for years. I think you said you were like in second grade or something like that. So we're suggesting the following. We're suggesting a new fee structure per student in which the first sport would, instead of 150, be 175. The second sport would be, which is a $25 difference from where we are. The second sport would be 150, which is zero movement from where we are. And the third sport would be 125, which is actually a $25 deduction from where we are right now. So if you have a child that plays all three seasons, there is zero increase with this. We are looking at a $900 per year family cap that we'd like to put in place. It excludes the extra funds that may be involved in certain sports, such as swimming, pool time, hockey ice time, skiing tickets, things like that. Those are still going to be the same. Free reduced lunch would be the standard that we come up with as far as, and maintain as far as having your fees waived. And then high school and middle fees together would not be combined for the family cap. So it would be exclusively for high school that we'd be talking about the cap for. Middle school user fees would stay status quo, no family cap, and again, the free reduced lunch for the waiver. You know, that's kind of where we are. We're still, even with the proposal, under that $210 considerably at, at the high. This, you know, it's, it's a benefit for kids to play three-season sports. Go for it. You know, you're not going to pay one dime more than you are now. It doesn't make this huge difference as far as what it comes down to the district in overall dollars based on the, the number of students that we have in each category. But it does make enough of a difference for it to be able to afford perhaps an entire team of uniforms. And, and that is a nice offset from where we are and that, that does add up over time. So that's where we are as far as the recommendation.
So I have comments, but I want to see if anybody else has. All right, Lynn.
I think it's great that it's standardized, but if you play three sports at 150, it's 450. If you do this, it's still 450, so there's absolutely no change.
Right.
There's a cap, so you're bringing in less money for the people that are paying over that. And I actually like the cap. But what does that do for supplementing the sports? It sounds like we're going to be supplementing more.
No. So as far as the entire, if you take all the numbers that we have of the students that are involved, Tanya was so kind to break it down, the number of students per season, per sport, per family. And it is a handful of families that are truly affected by the cap at, at this point. And the overall net difference after a year with all the kids all in with the programs, assuming that, you know, the numbers don't change, it's a $5,200 increase for the entire district over that time. And so there's not a loss of money. Yes, there's not a lot of, there's not a loss. There's actually a gain in revenue. And it's nominal and it still stays well under the $210 average. And then we had talked about, and I don't think we included it in our vote, but we had talked about, and we should probably discuss it here, is what do we do moving forward as far as making sure that things stay in line as far as rates go? And do we tie something to it? Like, let's say the teacher salary increases, for instance, if it's a 2% per year, then that's how you would adjust the, because you're paying on stipends and so forth. So you would adjust that perhaps and tie that into the fees. So the fees would be revisited each year and they'd, they'd go up basically as a COLA adjustment rather than, you know, the school committee getting together a five or six years and making a big, a big difference. So you're talking about a dollar, two, five bucks a year or whatever that makes a difference.
An increase in the family capitalism?
Well, no, you'd have to revisit that.
Okay, Kathy, do you have any comments?
No, I think, you know, Neil captured, I like the plan for the increase. But I think we had talked with regard to other fee-based things, like, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
All right, like preschool and maybe some other things that, again, instead of keeping things the same for so many years and then hitting folks with a big increase, we figure out a way and, and probably can't do it, you know, for this year. But to, to look at a formula or a way to increase it every year gradually based on COLA increases to our costs, specifically for salaries, benefits. I don't know what that is, but I think that's something that the school committee should work on.
And to be clear, we're not recommending that we do the adjustments for year-over-year right now. That we just, we're talking about the fees themselves right now that we're talking.
Laura?
I, as a member of the budget warrant committee, voted to bring it to the school committee so that we could discuss it, but I actually am not in favor of the proposal. In my view, I would rather see the fees go down. I'm concerned about all the families in the bottom third of the economic scale, which includes a lot of people not in the lunch program. I'm in favor of the administrative changes, at least starting a family cap. And I think it's reasonable to skew the fees by sport to slightly cheaper for the second and third sport. But in general, I think it's going in the wrong direction and I would vote against the proposal.
That's interesting. And family cap, does that include children in middle school and high school, not just high school?
Elise, do you have any thoughts?
I do. Yeah, I mean, getting to, to sort of what Neil was saying and Kathy too, I, I would really like to see some, if we are, you know, as we talk about fees, some sort of very standardized and very clear methodology for making increases. And whether that's every so often, we survey all the other districts around us and kind of, you know, like you do when you're looking at salaries, do our salaries match other industries? Okay, no, they don't. We need to bump people up. And, but have it be very clear and very intentional instead of, you know, waiting five or six years. So I do, I do think that, I do agree with that. I would like to see that happen. And, I mean, I, I, I feel what Mark is saying. You know, I understand the need to charge fees, but I also understand that there are those people that fall in that gap of they may not qualify for free reduced lunch, but this may also be a big stretch for them. And I'd hate to see any kid not participate in sports because of financial issues.
I would tend to agree with Elise on, on her comments. I agree with Mark that we need to index it in some way, the cost. But once again, we have this group that kind of falls between the, you know, the floorboards. And I think there has to be some consideration, whether, don't go away. Whether, what we, what we need to do is to look at these people. How do we do it? How do we, how do we identify people who may need help? We don't want to shut their children out of these athletic programs. And now I'm going to ask, the reason I didn't ask her...
The young lady that wants to get to the basketball game.
Well, I understand, but I'd like to...
So make it a quick question.
But as, as a student whose parents probably pay athletic fees, I'd like to hear what she has to say.
Well, I think that, I mean, I'm a student athlete. I played three sports my freshman year and then I played two sophomore year and then I stuck with field hockey all throughout my high school career. But I have a younger sister who plays no sports, but she does all of the theater, musical, anything that you can sing or play an instrument, she does. So I think that it's also important to remember with the user fees going up, I've never heard of someone who desperately could not make a team. I know we also have a boosters club who is always, they're always fundraising. And I don't know if a student could ever go to the boosters club and say, "I don't have the funds. I'm not free reduced lunch, but I need the extra," whatever that, maybe it's the extra fifty. Boosters always has provided teams with things they need. Boosters whenever any team goes field trip or does a day out. If somebody on the team can't make it and the team can't cover it, they can always go to boosters and say, "Listen, we have a few kids who could make it to this walk or fundraise for that." So we do have like another option, I guess, besides the athletic department. And I think that we have a very like, not sports-oriented culture, but people want to play sports in high school. So I think that by promoting, having the like, not stilted, but the like phased-out, yeah, tiered system, that's super helpful. I know that my parents obviously wanted me to play sports, but by the third season, it's like, whoa, okay. So I think that that's important to consider.
That's really good perspective.
She needs to be on school already.
How old are you? You could run.
She live in Bolton? They may have an opening.
What? No, no, no. All right, so moving on. Moving on, let's get it back under control.
Can I make one more comment on this?
Well, yeah, you can as soon as I give my opinion.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Thank you, I appreciate that. So I think, I thought I knew where I stood on this. I really did. And I don't. And I, and I, and I will pick a side, I will. I don't like the idea of anybody having to play for sports at all. But the reality is it's an expense and we can't assume it in the budget right now. I also like the fact that, I think it's interesting that we went into this, you guys went into, we all went into this thinking, we need to get these fees, you know, at a more competitive rate. And where we ended up is not really substantially different. And it isn't even near the, the mid-watch average. Which I know we try to do that with any cost recovery type program. But what I would say is, I could get behind this if the administration would take under advisement what Neil is suggesting and what Elise is suggesting, which is, could you come to us with a recommendation on how you would see, starting at these numbers and then continuing to, to index it? And what would it be tied to? And it would be something, Pat, that we would want you to be involved in because that's what's happening with all of our fee-based services. And I think we shouldn't be looking at them in, in silos. There should be a cohesive across the district perspective. So I would say, would you please work with folks to figure out what that would be? And then they can bring it to budget warrant. Yes?
Two further things for perspective too. Because this has been so long ago that this has been raised. Think, you've got to consider the stipends and everything else that was offered way back when this was originally in there, much, much, much lower than what we're paying now for the stipends. So those costs have continually risen while we haven't touched the fee, number one. And number two, we're very fortunate to have an awesome athletic director here. And, and I'm just saying that because you're here.
Thank you.
But the point being, our teams go on to play tons of additional championship things. And those are additional funds that cost us for busing and everything else. And so we have to think about that too. So those are, those are some pretty hefty costs that get thrown in the more successful we are.
Into the budget.
So again, $5,200 is not huge, but it is definitely a drop in that budget.
Okay, and so, thank you for that. And one other thing, you mentioned the family cap. I'm going to take this opportunity. Excludes swimming, hockey, and skiing. So what is there, there is no cap for those additional sports? Because it's understood that when you get involved in those sports, that it's more expensive. Most people that have kids who swim in high school competitively have swum. Hockey is the same thing. I can't, this year has got to be the year that there... I'm not comfortable with that hockey expense in the budget. And I'm, I'm, I'm going to go on record right now and say that there needs to be an adjustment in what's passed through the budget. And it's not just hockey. It's what, all, all three of those sports. Because when you get to the high school level, if you have been, and I know you don't agree with me on this, and it's okay, we can talk about it. But I know that when you get to the high school level, you have been participating in those sports all along. And they are not, it's not basketball and it's not track and field. So as a family, you pay more to participate in those sports. So when you get to the high school and now you're on the high school team, I can see where that, that drops, and it does, it drops considerably. It's not, you know, $1,800 a year, $3,000 a year for your kid to swim. It's $400 a year, $500 a year. And it, and the swim fee covers that. I know that personally. But the hockey thing with the $20,000 or whatever it is that the budget eats up. And I, I know that the last time you came before, she said it was like an additional $600 was passed along. But I think you need to look at that number this year because I don't think it's fair that the cost of an expensive sport is offset by other, other people's pulling their money.
We changed this year on the budget though, so only the game ice is going through the budget. All the practice is going through the user fee.
So what's the difference?
Off the top of my head, it's probably like $8,000 for game ice. And then the rest of it's practice ice, which is, we're going, it's going straight out of the user fee expense line.
And I'm sure that's not palatable because it's another shift. But I think it's, I just, as far as fairness is concerned. So, does anybody else have any comments about that before I stop?
I mean, my only thing is, on the other side, football, for instance, generates a ton of money. But we don't proportionally give that ton of money to football. That goes into a general fund and then that offsets a lot of other things. So if we're going to take, like, sort of that approach, I think we need to look at both sides and say, well, if this is generating money, maybe they deserve to have one coming to them than what they have now.
If what's generating money? Football is generating?
Football, for instance, is generating money. And they were using, they were getting new equipment that's been held together with rubber bands and chewing gum for like the tackle machines or whatever. But really, if we were using the money that they were generating, we could have paid for that 10 times over. We could have, they could have the top-of-the-line equipment for what's actually being generated. But we don't offer it that way.
No.
You know what I mean? So I'm just saying it's, I don't think that there is a complete parity between, there can't be on, on certain ones, expense and revenue side.
But you understand what I...
I totally understand what you're saying. I totally, totally do. And I don't disagree with it. I'm just saying, I think it's a big nut to try to figure out. I know.
I just, I just think that, I mean, you know...
I'm with you.
I mean, fencing, if we were doing fencing, I mean, think of another sport that's extraordinarily, you know, but you get involved in those types, especially something that's such a high-skill sport like hockey. Because it's not just about hitting the puck. It's about skating, right? I mean, it's, it's a, and so you don't just go to high school and start playing hockey. So that's why I'm saying this is not like a surprise. And it is even still, it is still much lower. And I, and again, I would, you know, but I still think there are some sports that, you know... All right, so I think we're done. But anyway. Given all that, thank you. I appreciate that.
So what you just asked Pat to do, is that a policy issue?
No, that's not a policy issue. It's just something that we've asked Pat to do as the budget, as the, what, you're the business officer? And we've asked her to look at working with the folks that are in situations like the athletic director is, to come up with a structure and a strategy about how we're going to maintain our fees and what's the rationale around maintaining those fees moving forward.
A quick thing that we're going to add, because this is, we also discussed this, and this is separate, is the physicals. So you have some families in the district that have a very hard time trying to afford the physicals.
Annual physicals?
Yes, that are required. So we waive the, the fee for them to participate in the sport, but then they still have to go get that physical. And that could be quite costly, especially if they don't have insurance or... So this, it's maybe a little preliminary, but the administration was taking a look at what, how many people that actually affects. And then if there are like contract rates that might be available with like Minute Clinics or perhaps even through the physician that we have, where we could actually bring, they would get like perhaps whatever it is, a voucher, so if they, and, or somebody would come here, maybe able to get those physicals. So those people don't walk away from the sport because they can't afford the physical.
Right, oh, right.
So, so we're looking at, we may come back with that recommendation at a later point if it works.
And I, I think that gets to what Mark is kind of leaning towards, which is give everyone a chance.
Sure.
Absolutely. Okay. Thank you. Um, does any, any other conversation about this, or can someone make a motion? Who would like to make a motion?
What, a motion to table this discussion?
No. Do you, well, does anybody want to make a motion to adopt what's in front of us? Or does anybody want to make a motion to amend what's in front of us?
I'll make a motion to accept the proposed user fee schedule 2018 as listed, um, in the materials.
Is there a second? Elise?
Yes, sorry, second.
Okay. Any more conversation on this? Kathy?
Nope.
Anyone? Okay, we're going to do a roll call vote. Elise?
Yes.
Steve?
No.
Lynn?
Yep.
Mark?
No.
Kathy?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So that was, how many of us are there? Five, two, zero. Five, four, two against, and zero abstentions, and the motion passes. Alright, thank you, thank you for the work. Appreciate it. Thank you, Budget War, that was great. Appreciate it.
You get nine minutes.
Are we good? Okay, let's move on. We're going to jump back now to human resource updates. And we're going to ask, um, Anne Marie Stoica, our Director of HR, come forward and share whatever she's got.
Thank you.
Please, you'll ring?
Yes, Kathy?
Yeah, is there a, um, a document that goes with the presentation?
No.
Okay, thank you, it's one of the packages.
Okay, Kathy, we really need you. I don't know, maybe your audio went down again, but, um, it's hard to hear you. So we're going to move forward and just. That's better. Okay, go ahead, Anne Marie.
Thank you for the opportunity to provide an update from the Human Resources Office on our positions and on our rates of attrition. For the number, as far as positions go, we've got about five hundred thirty-nine employees. We've got three hundred twenty-six Unit A employees. Roughly, there are about seventy-five in each town in the middle and elementary school. And then there's about another hundred that are either at the high school or were district, what we would think considered district-wide positions. Speech teachers, occupational therapists, physical therapists, people who travel from school to school. So those are three hundred twenty-six Unit Aers. The Unit C has got about a hundred seventy. The bulk of them are instructional assistants. There's about ninety instructional assistants, close to thirty custodians, twenty-nine custodians, twenty-two in our food service program, and then fourteen each in, um, the Extended Learning Program and our administrative cadre, the secretary is the administrative assistant and the registrar. In addition to the Unit Cers and the Unit Aers, we've got forty-three people who are unaffiliated with the association. People who are on individual contracts. Principals, superintendent in her cabinet, the coordinators, electrician, and then the, people in the business office besides Pat. Well, Pat is in the cabinet, and the people in my office and Joan's office. So that's our, that's our five hundred thirty-nine people. On the attrition side, we've had about, we've had eighteen people who have left us since the start of the school year. We had thirteen people who resigned since the start of the school year. Uh, we had four people who retired between September and now. And then, of course, our beloved Janice Kerrigan, who we're sad to have lost, um, last week. And, uh, I'm just saying that without crying. At the end of this year, we're anticipating, uh, eight people retiring. We've got, um, six teachers who have announced their intention to reside or retire firmly. We've got, and just yesterday, we got a phone call from someone who's seriously considering retiring, not a hundred percent sure, but leaning very heavily in that direction, but no more as the time goes. And then we have one teacher who has announced her intention to retire early next school year, so in October she'll be retiring. So seven, six this year for sure, maybe one, and then one in October. I imagine that must be on the person's birthday. So those are our eight anticipated levers for the end of the school year.
Um, so, one of the, um, questions we have for you is, um, are there any new positions? Can you give us an overview of any new positions that are being asked for in this budget?
Well, the budget process is still ongoing, so I don't have, um, firm handle on what those positions, which ones will survive at the end of the budget. But, um, so that that will be something that will still be, to be determined still.
So we need an update on that for next school committee meeting when the superintendent's back. An understanding of what the new positions are that will be.
On the twenty-eighth, so.
The next meeting is the twenty-eighth, yeah.
It's not the twenty-first meeting.
The twenty-first, or? No, she could do it on the twenty.
That's next week.
Yeah, the next meeting is the twenty-first, because we added it. She could do it on the twenty-first. If she doesn't know, she'll, she and I will talk. But we need to hear what they are soon, because they impact the budget. Alright. Does anybody have any questions? Mark?
Are there some number of positions, for whatever reason, um, are vacant because, because of decisions in recent years, perhaps a number of years have not been filled and are authorized but fleshterely have not been filled because of various good reasons?
The only position that's coming to mind that's been vacated that was very recently, and we're not in the process of refilling, is a position in our teaching and learning department. Beyond that, each of the people, just going through my head to see if this is correct. I think each of the people who have left this year have either been replaced or are in the process of coming up with replacements, yes.
Thank you.
Steve?
Um, the, the people who have indicated retirement, are these over and above the, would these positions be over and above the new positions requested in the original budget proposal?
No, they weren't, we, we, we.
We didn't, I mean, we may have known that they were retiring.
In the, in the new contract?
No. In the new budget proposal, there were a number of FTEs that were requested. Are those FTEs, are any of them because of anticipated or known retirements that we already have in place?
I don't believe that to be the case.
Is that, okay.
So replacements is what you're looking for? Neil, and Elise, and Lynn? Kathy, do you have any questions?
Nope.
Alright, thank you so much for your update.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Check the box. Okay, we're going to jump back down to, um, the FY nineteen budget update, and Pat Maroni's going to come forward. And then Neil, we're going to jump back down to Budget War. So, thank you. So what would you have us look at?
So, um, there is a PowerPoint presentation, or there are some slides. And it says, "Fiscally, a nineteen budget changes since the one twenty-eighteen budget workshop."
Got it.
So at the time of the, um, budget workshop, we had, we were projecting at that point a seven point three eight percent expenditure increase. And we have some changes that we've made. We've reduced, we've reduced that increase to a five point nine nine percent expenditure increase.
So that is not the town assessment, that is the budget? So I just want to make sure and make that clear.
Right, this is not the assessment.
Okay.
So, the way that we got to this is we looked at some, uh, at staffing, and we, um, determined some staffing efficiencies across the board, um, based on enrollment and, um, some other changes that needed to be, shifting of positions or whatever. And we came up with a hundred and seventy-eight thousand nine fifty-nine. Health insurance, we've, um, looked at what we have, that, what I had originally presented, and, um, the insurance company had come back with, uh, a decrease, and that is what is represented here. Hundred and eighteen thousand savings and just the changes.
This year?
Right, just so far.
This year?
Right.
What's our total?
Projected rates.
What's our total health care for the year? What's that line on?
It's five hundred, uh, five?
Million.
Five million, rather, five hundred, uh, five mil, oh, five million. And so, anyway, um, going forward, I want you to know that we've, um, we've come up with an advisory committee, an insurance advisory committee. And we have representation from our unions and some administration people here in the office. And we're looking at, um, the existing plans. And we're trying to determine if we can save both the employees and the districts some money, um, by reducing some of the costs and looking at efficiencies in the plan and comparing them to what other communities are offering to their teachers and staff. And, does anybody have any questions about that?
No. Then, you're on the agenda to give us an update.
Yes.
In and up on the agenda before the budget's done.
Right, I should have some new numbers, some fresh numbers, um, from the insurance company, because we, we're in a, um, kind of a different situation than some districts. Their renewal rates are, as of July first, ours are as of September first, which aligns more with our hiring for, for teachers. The July first rates are out. We, that's why we have a really good estimate as to what our rates will be. But we won't have concrete numbers, probably, for another couple of weeks. And so, and going through this process with the advisory committee, we're hoping to look at maybe a better rate and save some money, like I, I just spoke to.
Yeah.
So, facilities, um, we looked at, um, all of the different lines in the facilities budget, and we determined that we could probably save a hundred thousand dollars. We've shaved about a hundred thousand dollars, you know, to bring us down to this five point nine nine percent. Out-of-district tuition, um, Joan presented a student, a tuition for a student, um, to me and said, "Here, I have somebody that we're bringing back into the district that we can serve, service the needs of the student, rather than have somebody else outside the district at a higher cost." So, thank you, Joan.
Can we, can I just talk to you for one second?
Sure.
Because I think it's really important to hear Joan's perspective on out-of-district placement, in-district placement.
Sure.
Um, I, we haven't talked about this, but I've heard you talk about this before. So, right now, we're talking about out-of-district tuition within the context of the dollars. But that's kind of the after, that's after the fact. So Joan, can you talk about your philosophy on students in district, out of district?
Sure. Um, I always think about less restrictive environment first. So IEP teams drive decision-making. However, as you know, we've added some in-district programs, so we have more programs to offer students in district. And, um, we're always trying to keep kids in, because we know the, once a student is out and they provide a level of service, that becomes the focus of whatever the identified disability and concern is. And the concern I have with that sometimes is the level of academic rigor becomes secondary. So I think we have both here. We have great special ed services to provide students, we have therapeutic services, we have related services, but we also have the academic rigor that parents are looking for students to, um, also engage in. So I, you know, we're always keeping that in mind while we're thinking about programming for students.
Okay, thanks. Go ahead.
Okay, moving on. Instructional technology. In each of the schools, there's a line called instructional technology, um, in which they purchase anything from software to additional needs or wants that are technology-related, whether it be, um, I don't know, camera or something to do with technology in, in their classrooms. We looked at that, we looked with the, looked at the spending and decided that maybe, um, we should cut back a little bit on that. The budget at the district levels, the Tucci manages, he, um, puts forward, uh, per doll, um, I believe it's nine dollars per student in his budget to cover many expenditures. And I think that that's sufficient. And we're, we're still leaving a little bit in each of the schools, just so that, um, if they do have that software that they're, that they're using, um, at this school-specific, that they still have the opportunity to do that. But, um, we really looked at that with a fine tooth comb and, and determined that we could have saved thirty-two thousand six hundred and ten dollars on that. And, moving on to, um, capital for the high school, the Leach Field, which we're going to have a report out on the twenty-eighth of February. I'm meeting with, um, DEP next Wednesday in Worcester. And, um, I'm going to talk to them about, um, how we're going to proceed, uh, as far as the engineering component, which is about fifty thousand dollars, which still remains in the budget. And then the two hundred and fifty thousand, we're hoping that they will allow us to put that off to the following summer, because this work, again, can only be done during the summer months, because it involves, uh, origin, treatment of origin. People can't be in the buildings when that's happening, so. And that's how.
What happens if they say no?
Well, we'll have to look at something else then.
I know, I know. Well, we could always take it out of, not that I want to, indeed. No, I know we don't want to, but I, I worry that we've got two years to get it done, and we haven't done it. And now we're going to ask them if they could, it would be great if they would grant it to us, but if they don't, then.
Well, we have several alternatives that we can look at. One of the things I did was I had, um, a treasurer, Vicky Charnia, reach out to, um, a bonding advisor, um, a bond, a bond counsel, rather, and, um, see what it would look like if we had to finance that over five years. And again, we would have to go to the towns, you know, go through the proper channels with this and finance it maybe over a few years. But, um, I'm thinking that we probably won't have that big two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in this, in this budget.
Thank you.
So, um, one other thing, does anybody have any other questions about this amount and how the percentage changed or anything?
Um, is it the, um, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Lynn? Did you call on me?
Yes, you're going to have to make sure your volume is up.
Okay. The staffing efficiency?
We can't hear you.
You cannot hear me?
So, so Kathy, we got to make sure your volume is up. You might have to get on another phone, because, um, we need to make sure that people can hear.
Can you hear me okay now?
No.
No.
It's the only phone gang.
It was good until you said, "Can you hear me?"
Right, we're not going to spend a lot of time on this. Well, she's reporting back out of noise, isn't she?
Can I ask you a question?
No.
No. Alright. You can't hear me at all?
I can hear you, go ahead.
Alright. Staffing efficiency, does that amount take into account the, the people that are required, that are retiring, and the difference between their salaries and what we would hire at our school staff?
Yes, in some cases.
What's that mean in some cases?
Um, well. I don't know exactly how to put this. We've looked at, at enrollment, and in some cases, based on enrollment, we may not have to bring people back, because we just don't, we don't need them, because we've met, uh, we're still within our enrollment criteria. And in doing that, um, you know, there, that's where we've come up with a bulk of this money. So, and, and then we also looked at some efficiencies, um, like with the retirees, if we, if somebody comes in at a lower rate, some of them are a little bit higher, and when they come in at a lower rate, we know we're going to pick up a little bit of money there too. So, this is basically the number that we came up with.
Okay. Mark?
On, on the facilities topic, um, how many vehicles are possibly not going to be purchased compared to the first draft budget?
How many are not going to be purchased?
I mean, did you cross off one or two or more?
Both of them.
Both of them? Right.
Both of them.
I have a little bit of concern, because I know members of the administration have had some concern themselves about all of the vehicles, and they're going to be able to turn them over at appropriate time. So I think that will be a continuing challenge.
Right, it is a challenge.
And we all wish not to have an emergency when the vehicle's not working at all.
Okay. You want to go ahead? And then you've got your.
I have.
Each town's capital request?
Yes.
I don't know that we want to get into all the minutia on the capital request. Um, if you've all reviewed it before coming to the meeting tonight and you have it, a question, ask it now. Otherwise, um, it might be helpful, if you haven't had a chance to review it, to follow your questions. And we'll, we'll gather them all up and get them over to Pat. And we'll gather them all up and get them over to Pat, but I would ask that you would do that by Friday because Pat's working 24/7 on the budget. So, if you could please get all of your questions on any capital requests or any of the towns, send them on over and we'll get them all over to Pat at one time, and then I'll make sure that everybody gets every question and every answer, not just the individual that asked it. Does that work?
And one other thing too, the revolving fund balances, I had brought this report to Budget and Warrant a few months back, and I think this kind of got lost in the shuffle. I have a list of stagnant accounts that need to be, you know, rolled into a different account, and I have them listed where I'm going to close them to, here's the full list of the accounts, and this is as of the end of fiscal year '17, so this would be as of June 30.
So, this is tied in with, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So, this is tied in with the vote that we took last school committee for...
Budget and Warrant.
For, no, we took one of the school committee for getting rid of any of the dormant funds.
Oh, yes.
For you guys just to identify that, get back to us what you're going to do with the disposition. So, that's what this kind of is?
That's what this is.
Okay. Because we did that in last school committee, we voted to allow the administration, or we voted to instruct or whatever.
Correct.
Direct the administration to get rid of dormant funds and then report back on the disposition.
And the student activities will be next one that I break forward.
Okay, thank you. Is that it? All right, thank you. Neil, we're gonna jump, and I think Pat, you probably wanna stay.
Yeah, I'll stay.
Okay. I think we're gonna jump down to the OPEB recommendation from the Budget and Warrant Subcommittee. Can you give us a quick overview of where we're at and if there's anything you need from us?
Yes, so we've got, under old business here, we've got OPEB recommendation, funding and establishment of trust. So, you know, this is just an ongoing thing that just has a lot of tendrils. We made a recommendation, we voted to recommend to the, to the school committee today that we engage PRIM, who was the last, the last group that made their presentation, in the establishment and helping us establish a OPEB trust. We didn't vote to recommend engaging PRIM as the manager of said trust because we kind of have to adopt the, we have to adopt the legislation first in order to create the trust. So, very quickly, I'll read this. So, we need to take a vote as a school committee, which will be the next step, and they would help guide us through this process, but we hereby accept the provisions of Chapter 32B, Section 20 Mass. General Laws amended Chapter 28 to establish other OPEB Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund, the OPEB fund. We have a line item, but not a trust fund, right, at this point? So, that's where it's taking us. That in accordance with the Act, Nishova Regional School District hereby designates the treasurer of said Nishova Regional School District to serve as custodian of the OPEB fund. Then we resolve as to what that fund is, so that would be that line item getting transferred into as the appropriate, as the initial investment to the OPEB fund. Then, and this is all one vote that we will be taking for this, and this is the part that we need to have a conversation about, make decisions down the line, and that is the following person or persons shall be designated as trustee or trustees of the OPEB fund, insert either. A, the custodian of the OPEB fund, or the retirement board of Nishova Regional School Districts, or the name of five to 13 individuals, at least one with investment experience, one with citizen of governmental unit, one employee of the governmental unit, one retiree of the governmental unit, and one officer of the governmental unit. And then we make a final vote to move all of that forward, and that's essentially the process of setting things. Once that's done, and we've met our checklist, which has about 12 items on it, which this pretty much covers what I just read, then we can engage the manager of the fund. However, I think, and we need a clarification on that, if we had a trustee ship, a group of trustees, they may be the people that actually engage the fund manager. Or if we opted not to have the trustees, we could have the treasurer, who is the custodian of the fund, be the trustee of the fund, and then we would direct the treasurer and vote. That's my understanding, we need clarification on that.
Questions?
It's not easy.
Input. Budget and Warrant, Kathy? Yep?
Yes. I guess I'm a little confused. At the Budget and Warrant Committee meeting, we voted to recommend to the school committee to engage PRIM to assist us in the process of establishing the OPEB trust fund for Nishova Regional School District.
Right, Kathy, that's what I had said. I'm sorry.
Well, it's just, I guess that I got confused by the intention of the rest of the process. Even though we do have to adopt the statute, we, the concern was that we not wade into this without some support, and our vote was to engage PRIM to assist us. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean that they become the management company we use. So, I just, I guess, I wanted it to be clear that that was our vote and that was our recommendation? Is that what the school committee's gonna vote on?
Your first thing is the recommendation that we engage PRIM to help us establish the trust is correct. That's what we voted to recommend. The process is what I was describing, which is sample resolution that we would need to adopt, and PRIM would take us through that process.
Right.
And make those decisions. So, I'm sorry about any confusion on that.
Okay, no, I just, I...
Of particular note, Kathy, is the three different models of how we want the trust to be set, and we need to have at some point in time a discussion about that.
Sure.
Whether we have the retirement committee, which we don't have one to my knowledge, or create a trustee, a trustee ship of specific trustees with specific criteria, or if we have the treasurer be the sole trustee of the fund. So, those are the, some of the issues that we'll have to talk about, and they'll help direct us on.
Yep. Do you need anything from the, what do we need to do? There's several steps that you outlined.
I think we need to, we need to take a vote whether we wanna engage PRIM to start the process with us and help guide us along, like they had talked about, how they could help guide us along the way. I'm not so sure how much that actually involves.
Is there, I think there must be a fee attached to that, right?
It's possible they might say, "You should talk to your council." So, actually, it would be useful to actually talk with them and find out to what extent they are, help people bootstrap themselves up.
So, I'm, and I think they are gonna say, "You need to talk to council."
It could be, yeah.
But my question is, if we engage with PRIM, are we entering into a contract or are we, there must be some, there must be, I mean, this isn't just like pick up the phone, come have a meeting, and they're gonna sit down and give us some freebie advice, right?
Perhaps looking forward to ultimately getting the management of the money in the OPEB, they would provide that service as we start the process.
They may, but I...
I think that's what we have to determine.
I think my question, so my question is, all right, we wanna engage PRIM, so just for everybody's understanding, what are we engaging them for at this point in this step? Is there a fee and what are the terms of the relationship at this point?
Right, so what we're engaging them is to actually walk us through the process that I just described.
Yep.
Once that's done, we'll be able to, one way or another, vote to appoint somebody to manage.
So, we're engaging them to walk us through the process?
It's kind of a chicken and the egg, and we're kind of looking to have the chick help us hatch the egg, if you know what I'm saying.
I got that, but again, I'm gonna go back to what is the cost, because there's no way they're gonna walk us through this without some compensation, that they would never stay in business. What is it, Steve? You've got something else?
I'm just talking to myself.
I don't think so, but that's okay.
So, personally, in my opinion, there's not a what that PRIM has to actually do. I think they just need to help clarify a couple of points with us, and they've provided us with the sample resolution. And then there's a simple checklist that we need to go through. Once we get those things established, once we decide one of those three entities that I have talked about.
Yep.
That we want to create around as far as who the trustee or trustees will be, then we are set to set up the management company. And whether that's the trustees that do the voting, that's like something that PRIM can answer. There's a few simple questions for clarification that we need to talk to PRIM about.
All right, so...
But we can't go, and PRIM may take us and say, "We need to talk to council on this," but again, it may be a ping pong, and if we can engage, like if the administration can engage PRIM, have a couple of conversations about, "Here's what we wanna do to set this up. Is this the right way?" They may say, "Yes, but you need to talk with council and get that done."
So, 'cause I'm feeling like, I just, I hear what you're saying, and you gave a good overview of what the outline is of the activities, and I understand about the trustee and, or does the treasurer who reports to the school committee maintain that role? And then there was a third option, but Pat, it feels like we need to understand what the rules of engagement are and the expectations as far as what, what does this chunk of work look like? How much does it cost? What, I think we need to bring that forward.
If there is. So, we need to, we can't...
Somebody needs to engage with them.
Well, that's the whole point. That's the recommendation that we're making, is that the school committee authorize the engagement of them. Otherwise, like, we can't, as BMW, we can't say, "Pat, why don't you give PRIM a call?" And frankly, the reason that we're saying PRIM is because in our general conversation, we didn't vote on it, but we had a conversation where there, there seems to be, and I'm not holding any member to it, but there seems to be a general agreement that PRIM is probably the best option that we have as far as managed services, the experience with the mass state, et cetera, various reasons.
Right.
But that being said, that is the reason that we would look to talk with them, but we can't talk with them.
Right.
We can't tell the administration to talk with them. We need to bring this forward to the school committee to direct.
So, is it, is it an initial discussion too?
Yes.
So, it's a discovery discussion?
It's exactly.
As long as it doesn't involve money, because that's the only thing I'm trying to figure out.
No, no, right. There shouldn't be. It should be initial discussion, and there should be, you know, so Pat would literally say, "Here's your, here's the step process."
What do we need to do?
Here's the resolution.
Tell us, yeah.
Is this what we need to do? Just follow A, B, C, and then we're done, and then we're good to go, or what? But we can't, we can't.
So, we need to authorize?
Exactly.
The administration to conduct an introductory discovery discussion with PRIM to outline what the steps are that we need to take in order to begin this effort? Somebody move that one real quick.
I think, I think what we said was pretty much engage PRIM. We're not engaging them for the management, we're engaging them to...
For discovery.
Well, it wasn't even discovery, to assist us with the process, which that's essentially it, same thing as discovery, whatever, but...
Yeah, because to me, discovery's, because you know where I'm hung up, right? It's like, like, "PRIM, come on and help us," and then we get into this and it's like, "Oh, and, oh, by the way, it's $250,000." I just want, I just don't, my head's not absorbing it because I, because we don't have the information from them.
Right, and that's what they should be providing to us in this. So, yeah, I mean, we're talking apples and...
That would be my first question.
Yeah.
First of all, does this cost me anything?
Right.
These are the things that we need some guidance on.
Right.
Is it going to cost us anything for you to give us that guidance?
And at what point does it start to cost?
Right.
Right.
Because we want, we want it all together in one package.
For the sake of discussion, I'll second Steve's motion so that we have something on the table.
Thank you.
I have a question. I mean, if what, is there a point where school committee is no longer involved in this? That it's just happening like in a day or two, once in a while, or?
Not necessarily.
What depends on...
That's the determination that needs to be made. So, if there is a trustee ship that's put together with a group of trustees, so the trustees that we put together, and I already talked about that, that there have to be five to 13 individuals that are selected, and they have to have certain criteria that they meet. Somebody needs a financial specialist, somebody needs to be a retired representative from the government body, you know, so...
The key positions?
That doesn't even say that. I'm sure...
No. Go ahead, Steve.
I mean, we don't have a retired person from the school committee. The government organization is the school committee.
Nishova Regional School District.
Right. And I don't know if it's the district or if it's the school committee. You're assuming it's the district, I'm...
I am, because it's the people that, it's, it's their retirement funds.
But they're not part of the government organization, personally, we are.
Right, but that's the, that's the kind of clarification that we would need, that they could, you know, that PRIM would be able to clarify.
So, from my point of view, at this point, I would say the treasurer being the trustee is probably the best, our best option of moving forward. I'm just saying, at this point, in my opinion, but I agree, we need to have, we need to have some preliminary discussions with PRIM. And even though I'm not on the Budget and Warrant, my concept of PRIM as the potential manager of the account would be the one that I would look at, number one. And number two, I just feel that, yes, the only part we're gonna have after we set up the trust, we have the trustee and we're all, everything is signed, sealed, and delivered is that what we, what we budget every year to put into that fund. That will be our only connection, as far, as far as I understand so far, that would be our only connection with OPEB. Everything else is...
Managed.
Right.
It's managed, but I'm not 100%. I don't know if I agree 100%. We need clarification on that because I'm not sure who would select the management company if there's a group of trustees, if they would select the management company now that the trust is set up, or if the school committee would do that. And then number two, is it revised on an annual basis where you're re-selecting or through, like, well, like we would do, like with the auditors or so forth, every few years, review this, and so I don't know if there's something that...
That's due diligence, yeah.
Right, but I don't know what that process is at that point, and, and I don't know if it would be the school committee that would do it, or if it depends on the makeup of those three factions that could be the trustees, trustee, or the governmental body, which doesn't exist, but, you know, how they would play into this.
All right, so we have a...
So, it gets confusing down the line, we just need a few things.
So, we, so...
So, we're voting on a follow-up interview, basically.
Say again?
We're voting on a follow-up interview, basically, at this point.
Yeah.
To say, "This was interesting, thank you. We have some questions."
Right.
To help us understand.
One statement on all of this is that we haven't yet conducted a formal evaluation of all three of these potential managers, and it's probably in our interest to actually put on a piece of paper or three, a table which indicates pluses and minuses of each manager, and so that we feel comfortable with a decision in whoever that manager may be.
So, in order to do that, though, don't you have to identify what the criteria is for your table? That's important.
We, some of them, but it's, I'm just admitting that we have not done that, and probably people will be interested in doing that before a formal decision gets made, either by us or by the trust.
Right.
And we're just, we're not there yet for that particular decision, but there's initial conversations which are clearly necessary.
And so, Mark's absolutely correct. We talked about that this morning in there, and it just is a simple idea, I mean, you know, you're gonna buy a new car, and you're looking at three different models, go to your website, and it's gonna give you side-by-side comparisons of the key elements.
Yeah.
That's exactly what we wanna do and bring to the school committee, but we need to determine what the important key elements are. And so, I think it was Kathy that brought that up this morning. Perhaps we talked to Dr. Hemen, who might have some of those real key aspects that we should be looking for, that we can then make side-by-side comparisons with. I mean, there are certain ones that I think we could figure off off the top of the head with management fees and performance. There are certain ones that I think we could figure off off the top of the head, management fees, performance, and things like this. But then there are other things that we're not experts, and we need to talk to an expert, make sure that we keep an eye out for it right there.
That's a good idea, too, talking to Dr. Hemen.
So you're asking all of them back again?
No, I think that the administration could have that conversation with Dr. Hemen, and just, he could give a list of what the important things are, and then they could put that, because we had talked to Pat, and Pat would be able to get a side-by-side analysis based on whatever that is.
I'm sure they've done it before.
Oh, sure.
Right, so we would start with whatever he's got, and then review that, right? Okay, so we have a motion on the table. We have a second. Steven? No, Mark. Thank you. We've had some really good comments.
Yes, I think we're voting.
And we are voting to authorize the administration. We have lots of questions, but I feel like we're starting to answer some of the initial questions. At least we have questions to ask, right? Which means that kind of indicates a level of understanding. So with that motion on the table, is there any other requests, comments, conversation? Because if not, we're gonna, we're gonna do the roll call discussion.
Essentially, we have two parts, to be very clear. We have two parts. We need to establish the trust, which is what we're talking about when I describe these things here. And then we need to determine who's gonna be the management company of that trust. Those are the two things.
But right now, what we're doing is, we're gonna ask Pat to go and find out some information that will help us get closer to those two...
Correct.
Okay, I think we're good. Does everybody understand? Kathy, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, good. So Neil, thank you for that. Steve, Mark, thank you, Elise, thank you. Good conversation, Kathy Lynn. So let's, without further ado, Elise...
Yes.
And Steve?
Yes.
And Lynn? And Mark?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yeah.
Neil?
Yes.
And Lorraine, I'm a yes. So that's seven passes unanimously. Okay, we're gonna move, try to move into the stabilization fund vote. Neil, this is you again.
So stabilization fund, we actually have two different votes that would take place for two different stabilization funds. The first one would be the turf field.
Is this in the packet? Anything in the packet?
I don't think there's anything in the packet. It's a revisitation from...
There is nothing.
I don't believe we have formal text particularly describing the boundaries of each stabilization fund, but I think in the most, not to take up his floor, the most general way, budget warrant committee recommended to the school committee is desirable to have a stabilization fund for the field so that the bond, future bond can be, or the current bond can be paid off perhaps, or so that there's no necessity for a future bond. So circumscribed around the field as a facility item, and then separately, having a stabilization fund for facilities, capital expenditures in general. For now, that means the high school.
Right.
And possibly, I guess, vehicles.
In addition, though, just to be clear, so following the process that we're trying to do this year, we're bringing that recommendation forward to establish the funds. And we would ask that you would charge B&amp;W to go back and put in place the parameters, proposed parameters, of those particular trusts, and then come back to you and say, you know, "Here is the defined elements of this particular trust." And then have the...
Stabilization fund.
Stabili, sorry, stabilization fund. And then we'd have you revote on this again, and then that would, so it's two pieces, basically. We're creating the stabilization fund, but then you're coming back and charging us with creating some guidelines that we can come back to you guys for approval with, conversation.
Why wouldn't you not do it all at the same time? Why would you not bring forward the stabilization fund request for a vote with all the information we need to make a single vote? So that I could very easily say, "You guys go off and figure out how the stabilization fund is gonna work. Bring the package to us with your recommendations, and then explain it to us, and then we make the vote at once."
So, right, we could totally do that. My thinking on this was that we take the vote, we can actually have that discussion about the funds. We can actually take the information from the discussion we have now, go back and use that to put together something that's gonna be more meaningful to the school committee as a whole, rather than us coming up with our ideas and then everybody trying to tweak everything in that final vote, if you know what I'm saying. So I'm trying to take things that would be, like Lynn has a couple of questions, I know, from last trip. So she's gonna have questions, so if we're going back and creating parameters, we're taking into consideration some of the questions, concerns that Lynn had, or you have, or anybody else has.
Working through the discussion.
Right.
Well, it eliminates part of that process, but...
No, because you're making the recommendation, so if you bring the recommendation forward, and Lynn's got some, or anyone's got some adjustments they wanna make, then there was, there's no need to take, I wouldn't take a vote until the thing is cooked.
Okay, then let's pull it back.
I think you guys just go do the work, right? No?
It'd be useful, here, at the sense of the committee, if anyone's against it, we wanna hear about it.
Well, that's the point. That's where I'm coming from. If we're gonna put the effort into it, we wanna know that there's at least, there's at least, like, the will that people want, like, in other words, so...
So, okay, so let me post.
Yep.
How do you guys feel about a stabilization fund for the athletic field?
I think it's a good idea, but there's plenty of money. There's $242,000 in just fees. I mean, why aren't they just using that money for the field? I mean, that was supposed to be self-sustaining. So my question would be, where is this money coming from? Is it coming from the budget, or is this, you know, the fees from, you know, the ticket sales?
Which is, so see, what Lynn is getting to is like, that was my question, is how is this being funded? What, how, you know, is there seed money that you start with? I mean, is it every year you put money? You know what, I really think, I don't know if I'm messing something up here or not, but I say, "Go figure it out." You guys are the budget warrant subcommittee. We're saying, we are saying, we need, we don't know what, we don't know where to start.
But even this little information exchange back and forth is helpful to define things for us. Because honestly, we may not have even talked about where is the money gonna come from to start the fund. We're just talking about the fund itself. So, do you know what I mean? It's like, start the fund and then figure out down the line, where's that gonna come from, but...
So in the most general ways, you could set up the fund and not fund it for five years.
That's right.
Or the stabilization fund. But we do have a candidate revolving fund, which perhaps some large amount could go initially into the stabilization fund for the field, because it's there.
There's enough money there now to replace the turf.
But if it's not, if it's not in...
It's $242,000.
No, this is as of 6/30/17. This money, some of this was committed to this budget this year.
So part of the reason why you might want a stabilization fund is so that one year you don't end up using up the whole fund for...
Right, right.
Immediately, and then you don't have a future pot of money for when you're actually gonna replace the field.
But I wouldn't want it coming out of the general budget, because that field should be taken care of itself.
Right, but that's the crit, no, right, I totally, that's the criteria.
And also, in general, your stabilization fund needs to be funded through an authorization of the school committee, and that's usually in the general budget annually. So we might be putting some number of dollars, $5,000, $10,000, $50,000 a year towards perhaps each of these funds, so that you're building up a fund for later use, whatever that use was designated.
You don't come back and say, "We need to buy pellets, or we need to buy a machine, or we need to buy a part."
That's what the point is.
There's lots of money in there for that.
No, 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 but that's the purpose, Lynn. So right now, everybody, anything can be taken out of that fund and reallocated anywhere within the budget. And by setting up, setting up the stabilization fund, you cannot do anything except for use it for the field. So it creates, it creates...
And that's great, that's great, but I don't want the money from the budget to go into that fund. It should be...
That's how the fund...
Well, that's how it works. That's how we get money for anything. So what you would do is, yeah, it doesn't need...
So that $242,000 that's in that right now, whether it's used or not for the budget, was just kind of shifted. I mean, I don't understand why ticket sales would go into the general fund. I mean, it's a revolving...
It doesn't, because then you were revolving fund.
So it's the revolving fund, but you just said that you took some of that money and you put it into the budget.
No, you said $242,000.
$242,000.
The stick sales.
That's not just...
No, that funded some of the budget.
I didn't think you could do that.
So we, through our budgetary process, decided to withdraw some money from that revolving fund in order to fund some of the athletic activities. And so a future school committee can one year say, "We want all $200,000," and so that the pot of money that's there would not be available for some future activity.
If you were willing to come forward with something, I would like to see that you're going to take, you know, that much money, or you're gonna vote every year to an amount of money out of those ticket sales and put it in, and it's not coming from the budget.
We could make that a policy, but we can't control the future of the school committee.
Right. We, I think Steve has, Steve wants to make a comment then.
I wanna make a comment because at the last meeting, we have enough minutes, part of this discussion. And let's see, Ms. Maroney advised, "A stabilization fund is funded through the budget process and can only be used for the purpose the fund was established." Mr. Darcy advised that this would have to go on town warrant to create the stabilization funds. Mr. Darcy advised his chaired budget warrant committee that he would strongly suggest that this be put on the agenda tonight for a vote, so that it could be sent to the towns to be included in their warrants.
Alright, so what's your, that's good, but...
What's my point?
Yes.
My point, my point is that if we delay at least the concept of creating these stabilization funds, we're running up to the border of the town meetings.
I don't think that there's any...
We're not, we're not, and the stabilization funds, being different than a revolving fund, is funded through the budget. And it's kind of like OPEB to a certain extent. It's funded through the budget. It gets put aside. It's kind of like when some of us were younger and we had limited incomes, we would have an envelope with food, and an envelope for rent, and an envelope for this or that. And each week when you got your pay, you put a couple of bucks in here, and a couple of bucks in there, and a couple of bucks in there, so that at the end of the month, when you had to pay your rent, all the money was in your envelope. And that's kind of, I mean, that's my understanding of how the stabilization fund works, and...
Right, so I think there's a lot of talk, and I'm not sure where it's going. I'll leave, I have one, go ahead, Elise. I think we just need to...
Especially because Steve reminded me, because, you know, I was remote and I had the flu last meeting, so I've forgotten that. Thank you for the reminder, because I think it is important, if we want to establish these, to get it before the towns in time for these meetings. Because we can establish them and not put any money in them for the next five years, it sounds like, or forever.
Five years or forever, right.
But I think it's important, from a financial perspective, for us to set up these kinds of accounts and say, "We're gonna at least signal our intention to set aside money specifically for this so that we're saving for a rainy day, you know, we're ready for our rent, like Steve said, rather than getting hit by something."
I don't think I've heard around the table anyone saying they don't wanna set up stabilization funds. So let's establish that we all agree, because I've heard, yeah, 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 yeah. So we want to establish stabilization funds, is the request that we just want to vote to set up the fund? And then, what, I mean, this is, that's what I'm trying to figure out, is what is the, what is the ask?
It has to go on the town warrant, right, in order to set it up?
Of course, actually.
All three of the towns need to agree to this in the town meeting.
Right.
You don't have parameters around it. All you're doing is increasing the budget.
No, well, no, no, it's not really, Lynn, because what's like what Steve just said, it's, once this, once, I think there, a lot has to, for me, a lot has to happen before we get to that point, but all this is saying is, here's this bucket of money right here. We're gonna put $10,000 into this bucket of money every year, and that's gonna help pay for, don't use the athletic field. What was the other one?
Facilities.
Facilities. Because we know that the high school has got issues that it needs over and above that. And 10, you know, five years down the lines, Sawyer School's gonna be really old, and it's gonna need stuff, and whatever else it is. So every year, $5,000 bucks is gonna go, I just, let me finish. $5,000 bucks is gonna come from the general budget, and it's gonna go into this facility's revolving, whatever the heck it's called. Stabilization fund. And then, we probably won't use much of it, and then over five years, like $25,000, "Oh, my gosh, we need to replace the doors in the Sawyer School." We can take it out of that fund, and then we're good. So that's what the point of it is, right?
And it's a wonderful idea, except for now you have to change the district agreement, because the district agreement doesn't go with $10,000. It comes out of the town.
Okay, but, okay, so, but Lynn, so then, forget using Sawyer School, use the high school, because we own it.
Didn't use the high school, okay? So now I'm back to, okay, so what's the E&amp;D fund for them? What's the issue?
With less money in the E&amp;D fund, right?
Right, and for controlling wild fluctuations, because when we get this turf field done, I mean, we're looking, we're looking at the six figures to have that turf field done.
Lynn, there's so much money in the facility, you know, for the turf field. I mean, there's a lot of money that, I don't know why.
That money is not just sitting there, though. That money is actually, that's part of the actual existing budget, and...
It's $242,000.
No, there's not.
On the fourth quarter, according to this stuff.
And it's, and it's not there, so we need to get like an update on the fund, how much is actually in there at this point? But there's not $242,000.
There are expenditures against that money in this fiscal year '18 budget.
For sports, you know, but I just don't understand why, I mean, I would rather see parameters and how this thing is going to get funded so that it doesn't look like we're just building another pot to draw from, and we're still gonna go back to the towns for anything over $10,000. Because we still don't know what the parameters are for the high school, do we? I mean, when it gets to a certain point, we are obligated to go to the town and say, "Okay, this needs to get fixed."
So for example...
Isn't the law, and I could be wrong about this, but isn't the law that, can you guys clarify, for a stabilization fund, part of the point is that you then do not have to go to the town for the big expense, because you've set aside that money, and you've got $200,000 or whatever in that stabilization fund for your big, oh, my God, the boiler exploded. I hope that never happens. We, thank goodness, we have this set aside, and we don't have to ask the towns.
Ooh, that's gonna get, that's gonna get scary.
So imagine if...
The town owns the buildings. I mean, at least, then we're renters.
Yeah, and that was, well, that was my question about how the law works. Because the way that the law is set up for stabilization funds, is it's for that purpose? So how's it work with districts?
Okay, stop, stop, stop.
Imagine 10 years ago, we had set up a stabilization fund, and we put $50,000 a year for the high school, for facilities. In the current coming budget year, we would love to have $300,000 available so that for the septic facility capital expense we need, it's simply draw down the accumulated funds there. It would be not a, not a difficult budgetary thing, but because we slowly accumulated fund, we would be able to handle this. And we would not need to, for example, potentially, or hypothetically, go to the towns for a bumped-up budget in order to handle this capital expense, or possibly alternatively, to go to the towns for a bond. So that's the rationale for having a fund like that.
And that's great, so that's a great example, because now, if you had had $50,000, so last summer, you could've gone, you could've replaced the pump, the fire pump, and you wouldn't have had to go and ask for, or you wouldn't have to look for the additional money. So now you gotta put parameters in as to, okay, so when do you go to the towns and when don't you, or do you never go to the towns now?
Well, I would, I wanna just get something out there. Right now, the regional agreement says anything over $10,000 the town has to handle, unless it's the high school, and then we are. So that wouldn't change, because if something went wacky in one of the schools, and it was like $75,000 bucks, that's, that's a building that's owned by the town, that still the town covers.
This would be high school-based, because you're having, all three towns are contributing to the budget. This is not something that, like, this is just contributing to Bolton's problem. And so, so that, it just, if it isn't done, the agreement that way, it wouldn't be done. And you could easily put the parameters in place just to specify that this is a high school facilities stabilization fund, right? So, you know, something that's simple can be put in place to do that. And again, Mark's example is a perfect example, and it stabilizes the tax burden, because we're not coming and saying, "Hey, we gotta whack ya for 10% this year, because we have these things that we have to spend." We can't say, "No, we have to spend."
So, just, go ahead. Just back in what we did, okay, so, I guess we'll do this, but we're gonna go back to the field. The field came up, and the mistake that had happened in construction back in 2000 was coming to the end, it was paid for. And they went out, and they went to the towns for the $4.4 million, which was reduced to $2.2. Alright, so you're saying that at that point, the school could at that point say, "Well, we're gonna do something out in the fields," and they would attach that, or is this for emergencies and deficiencies? You know, what is the stabilization for? Can they use that towards the fields? Could they...
I think...
Do they have a project like that?
I want, I think, I think the word stabilize is really in reference to the budget, right? It's so that you don't, your budget doesn't do this when you have some big event. And because all of the towns own the buildings except the high school, I think it is a good idea to, given the condition of the high school.
So do we want to put some parameters on that before we still go to.
Well, that's what the, I, that's why I'm saying, there's too many questions. I'm not comfortable voting on anything tonight. If you guys, somebody wants to put a motion forward, there's nothing to vote on tonight until budget warrant says, holy crap, we're not really, oops, we're not really sure. Could have been worse. We're not really, I know you're not happy with me right now, but we're not really sure where this is going. But I would say budget warrant, you guys decide what the recommendation is for what this should be, how it should be set up, and you bring it to us because that's what you do.
So you want us to establish the parameters of the individual funds in more detail than.
Well, what is, what is it? Yeah, what is it, what is it used for? How would it be funded? Yeah.
Okay, I'm just going to play devil's advocate in here.
Uh-oh, here we go.
Because if you have a stabilization fund and you've created the parameters, you need to be very careful how you do that because you could wind up having something that needs to be done that you can't apply the stabilization fund to and you still have to go to the town to get done. So pigeonholing yourself in a certain way is not a good thing. The stabilization fund, to your point, is to absolutely stabilize things so that you don't have wild fluctuations of E and D, especially if the E and D is drawn down a bit. We're looking, we're forward looking, seeing that there are a lot of revenue sources which are going to be dropping off. We can't afford to have these huge swings with E and D. And so having that stabilization fund in there does allow for the stabilization of the, you know, the districts on those specific usually capital, if there has to be capital items.
And the school committee needs to vote, so, I mean.
That's right.
And I was in the impression that these were only for the high school, right? They're both only for the high school. So if it's, the way that it works, I wanted to understand, I'm, for the last meeting to fully understand. So the, the way, I'm just clarifying, the way that it works is that, you know, you have this pot of money. The, you, you know, with the, the example of the high school, we would not necessarily have to go back to the town, but the entire school committee would have to vote. You can't just have somebody that says, I'm going to, oh, we've got 250,000 dollars.
Right, that's actually really key.
I think we should have something really awesome. Yeah, some really awesome thing on our football field done. The entire school committee has to vote before any of that.
It's an appropriation from the.
They put it in there. So say there's 100,000 in there, they may decide, not going to put any in there because that's enough.
So I'm going to go back to, you know, what is it that you want?
A vote for the.
To establish.
Right, I, I honestly don't think that we need to have more parameters put in place other than we have a, a high school turf field stabilization fund. Turf field stabilization fund. And you have a high school facilities stabilization.
I get that, but even, even, so let's, so, okay, so, so I, I have to look two and three steps ahead or it doesn't make sense to me. So we vote to establish this stabilization fund. And we go to our towns at town meeting and say, put this on the warrant, please. This is what we would like to do. We'd like to set up these stabilization funds so that we can better plan for and react to large expenditures in this area and this area, right? I'm just trying to lay this out for everybody. And so when you put that on the warrant and then the FinComs and advisories say, what are you going to do with them? How are you going to, what are the deep, do you know, do you know where I'm going?
I think I know where you're going, but I think the FinComs understand the concept of the stabilization fund. It's basically to smooth out.
Right.
The budgetary process over a number of years. And what we're doing is we're, we're, we're putting money in that extra envelope so that if, God forbid, something happens to the high school, that we need to repair like a $300,000.
Alright, but stop for a second because I'm going to lose the thought. So where I was going with this was, er, so where I was going with.
That's me with a senior moment.
You want to be able to respond to critique?
Exactly. I want to be able to respond to, what are you doing with it, when and who's making the decisions? So if there are general rules and laws around stabilization funds, this is what it is. You can't do anything other than this. Okay, fine. And if it's just set up, I mean, I need some input here.
Actually, to respond to a little bit of that, the school committee can only transfer out through a two-thirds vote, which is the same as the budget. But because it was put in through the standard budget process, it can be done on a non-budget cycle. So for example, when the gym roof collapses, you can actually through two-thirds vote decide, okay, we're going to draw down the stabilization fund for this unusual, unexpected purpose.
So the question is, do we need to take a vote on this?
I don't think we need to take a vote on it tonight. It could be, we don't even need to bring it to the town meetings this spring because we want to feel more solidly, solid about the whole concept. And I feel like just having this conversation was a great start and it showed where we need to be able to answer critiques. So I, I'm not feeling urgent that we get it to the spring town meetings. It might be desirable, but maybe it's not the choice that we need to make. But I think within the next six months, we should bring a similar proposition, in my opinion, to the town meetings and, and ask, you know, really have that debate at each town.
What is the deadline for the warrants?
In Stowe, I believe it's March 30. I don't know the other two towns.
And so I, I don't think we need to vote tonight, but I personally would like to see it go on the warrants for the towns for this spring because we're putting it off another year. The, the high school itself has, the, the field has a finite life to it. The longer that we hold off on this, the more money we've got to throw into that every time and the less actually useful the stabilization fund becomes. The same thing with the, the high school facilities stabilization fund. By having that, one thing that we're missing out, if we're going to do anything to that high school, whether it's build a new high school or do renovations, there is going to be a period of time in between A and B. And there are going to be items that will come up that have to be taken care of. We're going to be looking at bonding out things, we're going to be looking at substantial amounts of money. And to have something come up which throws everything out of whack and us not prepared for it, it really can put the district in a tizzy. So by having that stabilization fund for that purpose, and, and if you, again, if you pigeonhole it too much, thank you Elise for bringing that up. Because by having the school committee make that vote, if you've got FinCom that are upset about something, bringing that forth, that's going to be on the agenda, it should be, I think, out of courtesy, discussed. And I think there's been good communication with the administration and the, the town managers. And I think that gets thoughtfully brought forward. But it, it allows us to make these changes without having to have, let's say, a special town meeting and bring people together in order to make this number.
Eventually.
Eventually. And, and again, E and D is going to be dropping down lower and lower and lower. So it's become more and more of a challenge to address big hits. And especially when we're looking at a big nut like the high school and the issues that we're looking to.
I, I.
So that's, that's the mentality behind all this.
I don't think there's any question as to whether or not we need it. And like I said before, I think everybody's in agreement that we need it. I'm trying to figure out, what is it that you need us, what are you asking us to do? And what do you want us to do as budget and warrant? That's what I'm trying to get at.
So I'm happy to have us bring this back to budget and warrant and come back with a thoughtful approach once again with you guys as to specifically, but, but I really think that putting parameters beyond what it is, it's, it's a high school facilities stabilization fund. If we say it's only for the heating system and suddenly the gym roof collapses, it doesn't cover that.
I don't think there's, I think that's fine. That makes sense.
But do you know what I'm saying? So if we pigeonhole that too much, the same thing, if it's called the turf field stabilization fund, you can't take it out and decide you're going to build a garden shed.
So, so what we've established after all this discussion is that we need a high school stabilization fund.
Actually, I'd like to, just having heard this discussion tonight, it may, there may be reason for us to agree to a district stabilization fund in the sense we have IT equipment that could, can be expensive, it's not located there, that is property of the high school, that there could be an occasion where we need to use or it's desirable to use stabilization fund for something like that. Maybe, maybe you have an IT disaster for some reason, I don't know. But I'm speculating that a just district, district property stabilization fund may, is worth debating and worth thinking about. And I think this is why we're having this conversation because we admit at the budget warrant committee that it's not a fully formed thing and we want to hear critique from everybody. And having a chance to have this conversation made that clearer for me just now.
I agree. And, and that's 100%. That's the feedback that we want to come back. And if we come back with just our thoughts and ideas, we're still having this conversation right now, except we wasted a little more time in budget and warrant.
I think this conversation's been pretty robust.
It has, and I appreciate that, to Mark's point, I appreciate that. If we just stopped, didn't talk about this and just sent this back to us and we got the feedback we're looking for in, in many cases. I still feel strongly about the parameters. I think that's a really interesting idea that Mark just brought up. We haven't talked about and I think that's definitely hasmeric. But the, the point being, I, I, I think if we pigeonhole things to very specific.
I don't know why you keep saying that. I don't, who's telling you?
That's the impression I'm getting that some of the members want and.
Oh, you mean Lynn? Just call it what it is. No, Lynn.
Did I say?
You didn't, but yeah, you did. Well, Latin language is great. But no, it, I, I wasn't specific to, I, I need to know where the money's coming from and it's, it's tough. And it also, what you're going to come across is it sounds like another E and D. And that's a tough.
It's like a savings account.
Yeah, and, and all it's doing is increasing the budget. That's what it sounds like. And you always talk about optics. It's like, okay, so call it what it is. It doesn't have to be for the roof. It doesn't have to be for IT. It doesn't have to be anything like that. I understand it's for the high school, but I don't want it to be another E and D for the high school.
Right, but then it's, it's really up to the individual school committee to decide where that money comes from. So let's say it's gate receipts. Let's say we've got $50,000 that we took in gate receipts and we say, hey, we're going to take it from that. But all we're doing is we're kidding ourselves because $50,000 worth of gate receipt still goes into a pool that it could come out from anywhere and it's still that, that money. But if we want to, if we want to have, right, but that's something for the school committees to figure out. And the towns are going to come down on the school committees if that's the way that that turns into. So it's, it's, anything can be abused and used the wrong way.
You know, one of the things that are, and we've got to wrap this conversation up because we, we need to and then we need to decide where do we go from here. But one of the things, one of the reasons why I'm all in on this, all in on this, and I would pretty much go with whatever the recommendation is for budget and warrant is, it gets us away from the, what happened to this district. It gets us away from hidden pockets of money, like little things that we didn't even know what the name of it was. We didn't even know where the money was coming from. It was like, there was like, you remember there were like, and through the audit, there was like money that was kind of like pushed into accounts that shouldn't have been there, that wasn't identified. And, and, and I think that this allows us to say, this is our vacation fund for the high school or this is our vacation fund for the district. I'm using that loosely, right? It's like a little savings account. It's like a Christmas account, right? You're putting money in every month and then at Christmas time you get to use the money. So that's how I see this, is it's, but we're identifying exactly what it is. We're identifying what it could be used for. And yes, there is money from the general budget that's going to fund it every year and we decide how much that's going to be and then we move forward.
And in addition, this isn't just like a random general account that we're putting together. So it is, it is literally.
It's identified.
Identified, specific use. And, and that's really the key and it still needs to be voted on by the school committee. So, I mean, that's the key part to all of this. It's not just like a second E and D fund or something like that. And the whole purpose of, of, to Lorraine's point, we're reducing the E and D and we're, there's these wild fluctuations. You get more, more stabilization across the entire budget, across the entire district.
With the E and D and the way it's going right now, we're not going to be able to respond. As the years go on and we wean ourselves off that hamster wheel, we're not going to be able to respond to big issues. So these stabilization funds, I think, are going to become even more important because it identifies, here's, instead of this big huge, what, 5% E and D? 2.5%?
I forget what it is.
2.5%? I think municipals are 5%.
5% is the magic.
5%. So instead of like, let's put 5% of our budget to whatever, 2.5 million dollars in a, in an account. And then as we wean ourselves off of it, something happens, it's like, where does that money come from? We'd have to go back to all three towns and say, we need more money. But if we set up a couple of these stabilization funds with areas we know are problematic, like the high school, right? Then we're slowly saving this money that's not going to impact the E and D fund because we know that building is not in a good place. And even if we did enter the MSBA process and even if we did get accepted, if there, you know, you built schools, right? It's going to take us up to five, six, seven years. What's going to happen with a building that's already in deficit? That, that's why I think this is a no-brainer.
And again, I'm not saying no to the stabilization fund. I have a problem with no parameters. There's, you, you came in and said, let's, let's build, let's have one. But it just, on surface, looks like another E and D fund, alright? And I, I get what you're saying. I get for the high school, I get stabilization. But on the flip side, like what you're saying is whatever you started with, once you establish it, so suppose you started with $50,000 and all of a sudden we need 300. Alright, you go back to the towns because we didn't explain it correctly and how we're going to build it up. And now we're saying we need 250.
Well, you can't, well, emergencies happen and crises happen that we can't plan for.
And I get that.
But let me tell you, just one more thing and then, and then I'll shut up and we'll dip the heck out of this conversation. But let's say it's $300,000 and we've only put 50,000 in from last year. We're going to the towns, asking them to split 250 instead of 300. So even right there, I, I mean, I know it doesn't sound like a lot of money, but you know, you're being thoughtful and planful and you're preparing for potential crises with this.
We knew this was going to happen. We've got 50,000 saved. This is the best we were able to do in a period of time. You've been proactive.
But if you haven't described it and you just put out there the stabilization fund, this is the reason for it.
It's not a stabilization fund in specific. It's a high school facilities stabilization. At this point, possibly a district stabilization fund, which is admittedly.
So why don't you guys go back to BMW and decide what this should be and what it should be for? You don't have to pigeonhole yourselves. That's not what we're asking for. But I think just some ideas and it doesn't have to be, it's definite, this is what it's going to be. But if, you know, like, we're recommending, how much money would you recommend to put in it? What is it for? Is it for just the high school? Is it for the, the district? And would you recommend, okay, put $50,000 in it this year and then increase it by 10,000 over five years till you get to 100,000? I don't know what it is, but.
So let's see if we can nail this down a little bit. Does anyone have any objection to the high school turf field stabilization fund, just by name alone? Is there more detail or anything that you guys are?
You probably want less because you'd be blaming pellets too.
I, I wouldn't, I, I don't know, why would you, why?
It's not turf.
What's the point? We're getting down into so many.
No, because the reason I'm asking that is because if everybody's happy with the turf, the idea of the turf field stabilization fund, we'll be discussing the district or high school facilities fund and coming back to you with that. We don't really have to have that conversation on the turf field part. So I'm just trying to get a feel, if everybody's comfortable with that part, we can push forward. We can make a recommendation for the amount because we know, we have an idea how much it will cost to replace that along with, there's, Tanya has a schedule for pellets. Tanya has a schedule for the turf itself to be replaced. So, and we may even want to call it the turf field slash track stabilization just so it covers that, but.
But that's granular. I thought you didn't want to be great.
No, because the, the track needs to be resurfaced.
It does.
Steve would like to say something. Kathy, I wonder.
Kathy, do you have anything to say?
Go ahead, Steve. I'm good with that. Go ahead.
First of all, the concept of the stabilization fund is like an E and D fund without the D piece, but it's dedicated, okay? In other words, it's a dedicated E fund, if you want to look at it that way.
So we've, I think we surpassed that. So where are you going with this?
Where I'm, where I'm going with this is that I would like to make a recommendation that we adopt the, the concept of a athletic field, whatever it is, turf field, stabilization fund and present that to the towns at the town meetings and the warrants. And since our budget will be decided before the approval of the stabilization funds, there will be no money put into the stabilization funds this fiscal cycle.
That's right.
Okay, it will have to be starting with the next fiscal cycle. So that's, that's my, my. So, that's, that's my, my motion is that we create, or that we recommend the creation of a stabilization fund for the turf field.
So why don't you guys, BMW, go off, do your thing, unless you want to do this right now, you feel that you need, I don't know that we need to come back to the next meeting, we've just added one, probably two, meetings. Bring, bring it back and tell us what it's for, and let's move it forward.
And I withdraw my motion.
And if you call it an athletic campus, and that way, because you might have to resurface the tennis courts.
That's fair enough.
Athletic campus, interesting, okay.
And that way you're covered.
Look at you.
Thank you.
No, no, I never said I didn't agree with it. I don't agree with just calling it a stabilization, but I'm walking away.
We're not, no.
Okay, so you guys know what you're doing, we're moving on, and it's charged to go. Okay, for those of you who are still with us and awake, Kathy, are you there?
Of course I am.
She's a good woman. Okay. All right, we can't hear you, so I'm going to keep moving, and just scream if you need something, but, not really. Okay, I'm afraid to ask, but subcommittee report budget and warrant.
Forget that.
We had just a generally good meeting.
Good.
I think we brought most of the things forward. Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I'm looking at, no, we pretty much brought everything forward already, at this point in time, other than, so we do have, that we discussed, and actually this is really key, so there is a copy of it in the materials for this, for this meeting, that, I don't, not sure if it's, is it there yet, Alita? So it's not there, but it'll be there tomorrow. What, what was requested, and this is Mark Springchild, and it's a good idea. We get a warrant, right, that we receive, and that warrant has always been very difficult to, to translate, because you get basically a bunch of numbers, and then you have to, at one point in time, we weren't provided the cost centers for those numbers, so it was like, it was impossible to translate. And it may have a, it'll have a note next to a $10,000 check, and it may say Joe Jones, and you have no idea what this was, so you have to have a query that gets put together, goes to administration, and then Pat or whoever else would look this up, and then get back to the superintendent, would then get back to it. So, every month, there's a report that's, that's put out for each one of the principals in the schools. And that is basically a report that details pretty much what's on the, pretty much what's on the warrant, except for some of the district's specific expenses. And it is specific to the line item, it tells you exactly what it is, it's got the reference number next to it, if you want to look at the cost center, if that's really how you want to go. But it creates all, a good majority of the items that are on the warrant, it actually gives, it makes sense, so you can look at it, and in 10 or 15 minutes' time, you can actually peruse the entire thing and understand what's going on, rather than, it would take you literally hours to go through that warrant that we have there right now. So this is a great way of being able to take what's already generated, so it's not creating any more work for the administration, and bringing a huge amount of transparency to the school committee, because the school committee is responsible for that warrant, and we don't want to be signing things that we're not understanding to a, to a decent extent. So I invite us to take a look at maybe these, these particular reports, and maybe next school committee meeting, or within the next couple, and just take a look at it, and see what you all think for yourselves, but I think it's a fantastic idea that we adopt, and we take a look, you know, just have available for people who want to get that detail on a quick basis.
So I think we should have the conversation, because I'd like to hear what the administration thinks, and, and, you know, I get the, I get the issue with the warrant, it is hard to understand what some of those line items are, but the school-based reports, but then why would you just be looking at the school-based reports? Now you're, you know, do you know what I'm saying? Now you're looking at the district, then there's, then outside of the school, there's other, I'm not really doing this well. Outside of the individual schools, there are administrative functional areas, right? So now are we asking Pat to, to send us? So I would say, put it on the agenda.
Right, so this is just a, it's a low-hanging fruit option for understanding a vast amount of the warrant, without any real extra effort on the administration's end, and it does nothing but helps the school committee, and gives great transparency as far as the process of...
So maybe, Alita, maybe for 221, can we put like, and we'll talk with Brooke about it, a warrant report discussion? Because I'd like to hear what, you know, what, what does, what does the report look like? What's Pat think? What's Brooke think? What do you guys think?
Brooke may think this is the worst idea since non-slice Brett.
All right.
And I think it's fair to say that it's still an idea that is being shaped, and it's not yet well-formed. So there's further discussion to be had at both the subcommittee level and at the school committee level.
So when is your next budget and warrant meeting?
I don't know. If Kathy's available next week, which we can take offline, then Mark and Kathy will meet next week during the vacation. If not, then it will be the following week.
I'm not available next week.
Okay, so it would be the 28th.
Okay, it can't be the 28th, because we absolutely don't have any room.
You guys are still working.
Well, that would be budget and warrant, that would be...
All right, so then you would bring it forward on 3/7.
I'm not sure if we're in a rush.
For discussion?
We're in a rush for this, we can wait till after the budget season.
Oh!
Yeah, it doesn't affect anything, right? It's just a, it's a convenience.
Nope, it's low-hanging fruit for understanding that big thick thing of documents that we have.
But you know I'm anal, so can we put it on an April meeting?
Yeah, no, 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 no.
Thank you.
It's great, and, and...
All right, we're moving on.
I'm just reporting out on what we did today, I'm not making any suggestions.
Anything else? Yeah, no, but it's a good thing to put on the agenda.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, thanks. Budget and warrant, you did a ton of work, and I'm really thrilled, and I think we all probably should thank you very heartily, because it's a lot of stuff we've been asking for and talking about for a long time, so, awesome stuff. Personnel, there's no report policy, I know you met, who's reporting out? Elise, what else?
I'm recording.
Okay.
Yeah, we met today, and finished the review of Section K, and also had a chance, Budget and Warrant joined us from 5 to 6, so that we could have a chance to kind of look back at some of the previous chunks of sections that we've looked at, and how they connect up with some of their policy recommendations based on the audit.
So what are your next steps on that?
Our next step, we have to, we need to, we have another section we have to get to that we didn't get to today, Section L, because of splitting up the meeting.
Oh, good, so you're still moving forward.
So we're still moving forward on that, yeah, I just need to check in with, with Susan, and obviously, and see kind of when we'll meet with Dorothy again to do the next review. In terms of budget and warrant, they have a printout of all of the relevant sections from the different, or pieces of sections, and they're going to sort of cross-check it. We did that together as a group, but they're going to go back and cross-check against the things they were looking for, and make sure that all the policies that we have, some of which are new from mask, match up with the recommendations. And then if there's anything left that they feel like isn't addressed by those policies, then we'll go back at that point and try to find some.
So you guys are doing some crazy work, too.
Yes, and we have a few questions that Dorothy is, is going back to check on, in terms of, you know, can we add, is there a policy that already does X, and where is it, or what can we add to it?
Cool, thank you, thank you, thank you. I think, oh, CPAP, do you have anything?
No.
Okay. And then correspondence, anything of note? I think we all pretty much see the same. Consent agenda, we're assuming that the meetings of January 31st, 2018, and the warrants of February 16th, 2018 are good to go. Our items for next agenda, now I got to really think this through, Alita. I'm going to have to go through the calendar, because we have the school year calendar. Oh, Anne Marie, shake her head, yes? Could you do it next week? Oh, awesome. So we'll do that, we'll move that to next week. Brooke's going to be doing the SOI, she's going to be bringing that forward at the end of the month, I think. The Melanson Heath check-in on the forensic audit, and that's for that, and Pat's bringing them in at the end of the month, on the 28th. And the employee insurance review is on the 28th, which is also our public hearing, so, and the Leach Field follow-up. So, if there's any way for some of those items from the administration to move to the 21st or the 7th, and I really don't want to move, you know what, next, next week we're going to do? If you could let Brooke know, next week will be the discussion on the digital learning, we really need to tackle that, and that's going to be a big, long chat. So maybe we, we're okay, for the 21st.
So you'll have to get in touch with her to do the agenda, because she's out of town until Monday night?
She's out of town until Monday night? Oh. Well, if you talk to her, let her know, we need to...
Because the agenda will have to be posted Friday because of a holiday Monday.
What's the...
It's presidency Monday.
She did emails?
I'm sure she is.
Yeah.
So someone will have to create an agenda Friday.
Yep. Because now we're crunching on time, and we're just going to have to do it. All right, thank you for that.
Somewhere, we've got like basically three meetings, I think, maybe a fourth if there's a second.
Right.
Between now and when that warrant, anything that was going to a warrant, would have to be on there. So we're going to have that discussion on the stabilization funds on one of those agendas we want to probably...
You want to do it on the 20th, can you do it next week? You won't be able to meet?
I won't be here.
So it would have to be on the 7th, well, I think you all need to be here for that. So it would have to be on the 7th. You'd have to be prepared to go on the 7th for the stabilization fund.
I think we could, as far as answering some of the questions you had, I mean, at least for the discussion, with a possible vote.
And we can ask Brooke to let the town administrators know that this is coming, because she meets with them regularly, so she can give them the heads up. And that way, we're letting, because they're the ones that put the warrants together for the town, so that's a good point. Does that work? That works. So next week, we're going to do, well, we've got to get in touch with Brooke, but I care, I care about that.
Can we request that we find out from the administration what the cost of replacing the turf would be, the pellets would be, the track, and, and the tennis courts?
Tennis courts, I don't...
Well, if Tanya has any of that, so then...
She might have it.
Then we have an idea of where we, where we would put it, as far as like a recommended cap or whatnot on that.
So, can you just circulate that information to the full committee, and that way, everybody has it, you guys can do with it what you need, and that way we don't, we can just get it out? That's a great suggestion. Okay, I think we're good to go, and at this point, we, we have an executive session that is scheduled, and we do, it's to review executive session minutes. So we cannot do that in public, and I need someone to do me the favor of reading and getting us in there, making the motion. Do you have it, Mark?
I have the...
You can do it.
I move that we move into executive session, so to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3, to review and discuss draft executive session minutes of April 26th, 192017, May 10th, 2017, September 13th, 2017, November 29th, 2017, December 6th, 2017.
Two sets.
Two sets, as, and to do so, because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating, litigation position of this public body, and the chair so declares.